Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Thursday, April 13th, 2023, meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody, thank you for coming. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Hetzke.
Hetzke, here.
Aiken.
Aiken, here.
Burton.
Burton, here.
Knower.
Knower, here.
Tidings.
Tidings, here.
Sangster.
Sangster, here.
Wyssar.
Wyssar, here.
O'Connor.
O'Connor, here.
Prinzing.
Prinzing, here.
Gray, here.
Okay. Thank you. We have a...
We have a busted valve in one of the radiators, so it'll make that noise occasionally tonight.
What is it?
The busted valve.
Busted valve on one of the radiators.
Huh, okay.
So it'll make that noise occasionally tonight.
Great. Okay, we have minutes from the, excuse me, March 23rd meeting. Hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to review them, and can I entertain a motion to approve?
I think it's motion to approve.
Knower, second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Knower.
Knower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right. Tabled applications. Doug, would you like to start going over the agenda?
Yeah, we'll run through those pretty quick. The first one, the Pathstone Mixed Use Development. We haven't gotten anything new from the applicants, so if you guys would like, we can just continue table that.
Okay.
Motion to table.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Knower.
Knower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right. Tabled application number two, the Chick-fil-A at 2130 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. So they had come back previously with a partial set of plans that they had worked out with the landlord. They've gone back to the drawing board again. They're doing some building modifications. They want to run new parking numbers, so they've been in discussion with the Building and Zoning Department on that. So for now, we have no new information, but at the last meeting, we determined that we'd set up a new public hearing whenever we do get a full resubmission with responses.
And that should be forthcoming in the next month or so.
Yeah, next month or so would be my guess.
Or whatever. Okay.
Actually, they called, they intend to submit next week.
Submit next week, okay.
So move to continue tabling.
I'll second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Knower.
Knower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Tabled application number three, 2070 Empire Boulevard, the R G N E substation rebuild. Likewise, this one has remained quiet. Last, we had discussed with them, they were doing some due diligence and potential looking at alternative sites for the substation. They said they were hoping to be in by this meeting, but we haven't heard anything from them. So at this point, if you want, you can continue tabling it until we either receive a resubmission or additional contact.
Okay, motion to continue tabling.
Knower, second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Knower.
Knower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right. Tabled application number four, 2305 Penfield Road. It's a two-lot subdivision. Since the last meeting, we have received revised plans. Included with the revised plans was a survey plat stamped by a licensed land surveyor. So we do have that in house now. We have relatively minor comments on the survey. It looks good on our side. However, on the site plan for the two homes and the grading that's necessary, Mike can elaborate more, but staff has, still has significant comments on the plans.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they're technical in nature, so I think we can work through them, but there is a significant amount of comments in order to make this plan, you know, kind of constructible kind of plan. So we generally have, the engineering department has concerns on, you know, that aspect of if the board wants to grant an approval on the subdivision, that, you know, the applicant might be working through several iterations before signatures can be obtained from the, you know, town departments in order to pull a building permit at all, so.
So we got the surveyor.
Yes.
Signed survey, and there's still a number of technical questions, I mean, on the...
Yeah, generally, the engineering department is fine. I guess that the ability to subdivide this into two lots is probably acceptable and could probably happen. It's the actual, how is this grade out? How does it work? And make sure that we have, you know, drainage challenges in this, on this lot and stuff like that. So we still have, you know, a couple comments to work through in order to get to an actual, where they could pull a building permit.
Yeah, and I guess my concern with... I've had and witnessed many people come in years down the road saying, hey, my, my property floods. I have all these drainage issues. And to me, approving it without having those taken care of invites that down the road.
Yes.
Okay. How's the rest of the board feel on this?
I feel the same way.
Are the drainage issues that we've discussed resolvable?
Oh, I believe so. I mean, there is no physical outlet to the proposed pond that they're proposing, which, you know, then you need to make sure that it infiltrates and stuff like that. I think this will generally help the area, but it's just this, you know, semantics of trying to make sure that we are trying to do a betterment for the drainage in this area, so.
Is it reasonable that you would be closer to accepting the design by the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, we're hoping to finish our review of the plans that we did receive on Monday. So, but I'm only one of three people in the engineering department, so the other people need to review it. We'll hopefully get, you know, probably another round of comments back to the applicant, and then it really depends on how they're responded and how the plans are revised, so.
Okay.
I'm good with waiting until everything's complete, and then we'll take a look at it then.
Yeah, I had one, one comment on the serv, on the survey. Does it in fact show that new fence that's on there?
Uh, I haven't looked at...
Okay. It looks like it does, but maybe double-check that. If it does, I don't see it in the legend, so it, you know, just...
We can make a note of that.
Yeah. That was it.
Okay, so we're making forward progress, but not quite there yet. That be an accurate summary?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. I'll move to table pending completed engineering work.
That sounds good, yeah.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Who do we get?
Me.
I think Bob, Bob said it first, but I heard Kelly louder, so.
My loud voice.
Give it to Kelly. Sorry, Bob.
I'll remember that.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Knower.
Knower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
All right. So in addition to our tabled items, we do have a couple of action items. The first one is site plan modifications for the previously approved Arbers at Penfield project. I believe we have Garth Wintercorn and Jim Fahey in the audience, if you'd like to have them.
Yeah, if you, one or both of you guys want to give a real brief synopsis? Are you prepared for that, or of the proposed changes? Or is this catching you off-guard?
I, I could go through them as well, if you'd like.
Sometimes it's fun putting people on the spot.
You're doing a good job.
Thanks.
Let's all prepare to sit back there nice and quiet and listen to you guys.
Good evening, everyone. Jim Fahey from Fahey Design Associates. We're the architects for the Arbers. Basically, we are before, our, our disaction item is dealing with several site plan minor modifications along with very similar minor modifications to our, our building portfolio. A letter was provided to the town of these changes, a summary of which, I don't know if you'd like me to go through this list of items, or...
Just a brief, I mean, we've all gotten the material, and, you know, I think maybe some of the, the big general highlights to give people more of a visual idea.
Yeah, so I think we've, we've provided the site plan and also the portfolio modifications to the town, and it's really a one-for-one. We have not, we're not asking to change any of the building types or the building counts of those types. Where there was proposed to be a single-family residence, there will be a single-family residence. Where there's a two-unit villa...
Do you have some other renderings you can bring up to side-by-side?
Yes, I'll have Matt bring those up.
Just to, just quick, show the nature of the proposed changes that... And you don't need to go through them, I just want them on the record for...
Yeah, so I think as we presented to you, I, I almost would call this a Where's Waldo exercise, because I think if you look at the portfolio that was provided versus that, that we've, are now presenting and proposing for construction, they're identical on their style, scale, and massing. We've taken a few inefficiencies out of our buildings as we got into them further and started looking at them. We are taking construction dimensions to a tighter scale. We lowered a few roof pitches, but if you look at them side-by-side, and we, I think we provided some renderings to the town showing this, the buildings are identical from, from the community center on through the low-rise residential units. The vertical mixed unit, uh, mixed-use buildings have not changed at all, but we've made some minor modifications to the actual buildings, whether it be single-family, two, three, or four-unit buildings. But their exterior presentation in the neighborhood, the massing, the materials, the color scheme, everything is exactly as we presented it to the town from day one. So this is really more of some minor adjustments, taking some of the inefficiencies out of the buildings that we had, and as we got into construction documents, we're realizing.
I think I, I put Matt on the spot here, too. But Garth, any increase in impermeable surface? Any concerns on that that we might see?
Actually, we, we provided a table, a table that lists all the M U D district requirements and thresholds, the previous plan versus the updated plan, and pointed out in the letter what we think are positives based on the new plan. And one of them, as you mentioned, A.J., was the impermeable areas actually dropped quite a bit with this layout. So that's a positive in terms of drainage. The total number of apartments and, we call them dwelling units, before and after, I think were 17 less than we were previously. So in terms of traffic, that's a, that's a slight positive.
Okay. Okay. Everybody's had a chance to look at the renderings, I presume?
I apologize, we're having trouble opening the PDF on our system. It keeps crashing.
Okay.
But I know we gave you guys physical copies of those.
Right. Everybody seen them? Anybody have comments, any issues?
Yeah, just, so for staff, the, because the one building becomes two, the egress sidewalks, things of that nature, makes sense?
Yes.
Yeah. That was it.
Any other concerns? Bob, this is yours. You want to go ahead and...
Sure. Okay, I will move that, move to accept the site plan modifications as presented.
We have a second.
Tidings, second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Knower.
Knower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for letting me put you on the spot there.
All right. So we have a second action item. It is a re-subdivision request for Watersong Section 5, two lots, lots 117 and 118. There we go. So party's interested in putting a large home, wants to purchase two lots, merge the two together. It was a 278 application. Merging doesn't affect it. It is a zoning compliant lot, and the conservation easements that were consideration as part of that subdivision will remain in place.
Okay. No concerns from, I'm assuming.
No concerns from staff.
Somebody want to move it?
Tidings approve.
We have a second.
I'll second.
That's her, yeah. She wins.
Hetzke.
He's getting old. Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Knower.
Knower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Any other work session business?
Uh, it was all I had for you guys.
That's it? Okay. So as is our practice for the last several years, our public hearing portion of the meeting is typically scheduled to start at 7:00 or once our table, once we get through our tabled item agenda, which we have. So we will move directly into the public hearing portion of the evening and the meeting. If you are not familiar with our process, we have three applications this evening before us. And if you're the applicant, first, when your application is called, please come up to one, probably this table here. And if you have a laptop or a computer that you want to do a presentation with, there should be a HDMI cable or some type of connection cable. Am I speaking out of turn here?
If there's not, there's one over here, and we can...
Okay. If there's not one there, then you can sit next to Mr. Sangster here, and he shouldn't bite. Give your presentation. At that point, the board will ask whatever questions we have of the applicant, and then I will open it up for public comment. And those of you who are here, you could just raise your hand, and I will call you as I see that happen. And once you're called, please come on up and sit at one of the open seats, speak into the microphone and state your name and address for the record, and then please let us know your comments, and please address your comments to the board. If you're not here in the building, you can call in at 585-340-8771. You can also visit the Penfield website, which is www.penfield.org, and there should be a link on the homepage to this meeting, and you can submit your comments electronically. So with that, Doug, please read our first application. And whoever the first applicant is, come on up to one of these two tables.
James R. Edel, 1327 Penfield Center Road, Penfield, New York, 14526. Requests under Chapter 250, Article 11-11.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final subdivision approval for the proposed subdivision of a 12-acre lot into two lots located at 1327 Penfield Center Road. The properties now are formerly owned by James R. Edel and Zoned Rural Agricultural, RA2, application number 23P-0005, SBL 110.03-1-6.
Good evening, thank you.
Hello, I'm James Edel, and I am asking the board to allow me to divide or subdivide my piece of property, 12 acres into two parcels. I have a smaller parcel that I'm going to sell, helps to pay my taxes.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm hoping that my proposal will go through, and you'll allow me to subdivide it.
Okay. Bob, you want to start off?
Sure. I noticed in the first question I'll ask staff, was it resolved for the actual existing house pad and septic system? Or that's located on the parcel with the existing house?
Yes, so that, we do know where the house is located based on the survey. At this time, the survey, we did just get an updated survey. It still doesn't include the approximate or known location of the septic system. That is something we'll be requesting of the surveyor.
Okay. And James, could, could you describe the, the parcel that you're selling? Kind of what the topography is? Because I see there is a, there's a buffer in there. Just kind of describe what that is, what you think...
Well, part of my...
Where possibly a house would, would sit on that property.
Yes. I'm assuming there's going to be a driveway going in from the road in the smaller section. Up back behind my home, it opens up, and it's a higher area, higher elevation back there. So I'm assuming that's where someone would probably build a home, put a septic system in.
And I know that's, so of course, there isn't sanitary, but I know there's, there's public water there. Okay, and I think I saw the comment from staff, too, that it looks like if it's engineered properly, it's a viable lot.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, most of the significant EPods are on what will remain as Mr. Edel's property.
Okay. Okay, I'm good.
Okay. Jim, any questions?
I don't have any comments on this, no.
Kelly? Looks pretty straightforward to me. I don't have any questions. What I'd like to do is open it up to the audience. If there's anybody that would like to speak about this application, please raise your hand. Let me look online to see if there's anybody calling in. We have operators standing by. No phones? No email submissions, so thank you for your presentation. And, uh... The, the process is, once we get through our public hearings, we discuss the applications that came before us, and then either table or take action at that time.
And when will I be notified?
This, to me, looks pretty, pretty simple.
Yeah, I'll follow up with you after the meeting.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much.
So, thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Appreciate yours.
All right.
Okay, moving on.
Application number two, Greg Grillo, 231 Bayview Drive, Webster, New York, 14580. Requests under Chapter 250, Article 12-12.2 and Article 13-13.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final site plan and conditional use permit approval for the proposed improvements to the rear 1,000-square-foot building, including the addition of a handicap-accessible ramp and entrance, a 1,500-square-foot plus-or-minus building addition, and other associated site improvements on the 0.48 acres located at 1676 Penfield Road. The properties now are formerly owned by Nick Agnello and Zoned Limited Business, L.B. Application number 23P-0006, SBL 139.05-1-56. I would like to make a note on the legal description. We did advertise it for a conditional use permit. That will be handled by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Since the Zoning Board of Appeals was the, since the business currently operates under a conditional use permit, the Zoning Board originally granted that in 2022. They will be the board to review the modification of the conditional use permit. So that was an error on our part in the legal description.
Okay. Okay. Come on up. Welcome.
Hello. My name's Nick Agnello, and I live at 36 Wendell Park in the Neighborhood of the Arts. And...
I'm Greg Grillo. I'm owner and operator of Flower City Amusements and Flower City Arcade located at 1676 Penfield Road in the rear building.
Okay.
I am presently the owner of 1676, although just for the record, I want to mention that in the not-too-distant future, Greg's going to become a partner. So he has a, not only a personal, but a, a legal law-abiding vested interest in, in this whole project, so. So we're looking at a property that has two buildings on it, and we've had a few different site plans created, and hopefully you have, yes, I see you have the most recent. I understand it's kind of a tight site, but we hope that we have, thank you for having us, by the way.
Sure.
I hope that we have worked out a situation, keeping in mind, I'm learning all these great terms, permeable surfaces and versus green, impermeable surfaces versus green surfaces and the like. So we, we've worked out a parking situation, and that we hope will be able to better accommodate the patrons that are coming and going, and it's a thriving business that we're excited about. And I'm going to let Greg talk a little more about that unless you have some questions for me.
Go ahead. Greg?
Okay. Yeah, so it's, it's business that's been open for a little over a year now. It's, it's been fairly successful. It's a vintage arcade. It's all arcade games from the 80s and, and before. We've gotten to a point now where...
Vintage from the 80s, that's, okay, keep going.
Some, some do date back to the 40s. It makes you feel a little bit better.
Being called vintage.
But it, it's been a popular destination in Penfield, and I'd really like to see it expand at least a little bit, if possible, at the location it's currently at.
Okay. Okay. Believe you submitted some renderings of the proposed new structure?
Yes, we're hoping that you have those.
Do we have those available? Or are we crashing again?
No, I'll have, I'll bring them up here in a moment.
I'm curious, there was no, you know, normally on the drawings, you see the who did it.
Right.
The renderings looked pretty good, but they had no name or, who did those? Oh, you did them?
Nick drew a few of them.
You drew the renderings?
Oh, yes.
Nice job.
Yeah, we will continuously be trying to upgrade the aesthetics and the functionality of the buildings. They're older buildings, and, you know, it's an ongoing process. And we're going to keep working at that. Make sure it has good curb appeal and that sort of thing. So there's a rendering. If you look at the left side of the structure, you could see the proposed added addition, which hopefully is in keeping with the nature or the style of the architecture. And the handicap ramp is there as well. So that portion on the left, that's what we're looking at in terms of the expansion.
Overall, square footage proposed?
It's close to an additional 1,200 square feet.
There's currently a roughly 200-square-foot room that's there. It would be coming down to make room for this. And the facility is currently not handicap accessible, so that's something I'd like to do with it as well, is make it accessible to anybody who would like to play games from the 80s.
Okay. All of us with our walkers, is that what you're saying? Okay. Terry, you want to start off?
Yeah, thanks. I had a good day the other day. I met with Greg over there. Sorry, Nick, you weren't there, but I got to see the operations my first time since you guys opened that. So it's been about a year since you opened that, correct?
A little over.
Only questions I have, like, okay, so now this rendering here, so we're going to tear down the garage, right? We discussed for the other board members and people watching tonight. Go over a little bit of that, what your intentions are to do with the garage.
Yeah, the rendering definitely depicts the area without the garage. That's going to have to go.
Could you go back to the, yeah?
There you go.
There's an attached shed on the north side of the garage as well.
So that whole structure would be removed and replaced with additional parking? Would give us an additional seven parking spots on site.
Greg, how many do you think a parking spot's at right now because it's really not marked too well? What do we just?
We have about 12.
12?
Yeah. And we look to increase it to 20, actually.
Okay, so you're going to need a variance for that?
Yep.
We would need a variance, yeah.
And I know we discussed that you're going to talk to the owners adjacent to that location, correct? Possibly for parking?
Yes. We've talked with Dave Speedy on numerous occasions about potentially leasing some parking spots.
Is that, who owns that strip just to the north?
Yeah.
Yes.
If I may address that, I just spoke with, we talking about this additional parking right now? Okay, I just spoke with the owner of Speedy's Plaza. Dave was kind enough to call me today, and he's wanting to help, you know, Greg and his business. And he's offered up these 18 parking spots, actually. My hope is that we won't need them necessarily, but they are there if we do. I'm hoping that we've maybe come up with a parking lot plan here that suffices our needs. But that's up to you guys to decide, I guess.
Typically, what, how many people are there on the busiest time today?
Today, I might have 10 to 15 customers throughout the entire day.
And do they, okay, so throughout, what about any specific given time? So if you have 10 to 15 customers throughout the day, you're open from, what, 10 to 10 or some, what hours?
During the week, I'm open evenings, so 5 to 11 p.m.
I'm sorry?
5 p.m. to 11 p.m. during the week.
So during that period of time, from 5 to 11, you might have 10 to 15?
During the week, yeah.
And then on weekends?
So I'm only open Saturdays during the weekend. I'm open 3 to 11. At the busiest of times, I've seen 35 guests at one time.
Okay, and do they typically drive individually?
No.
Get there by themselves, or do they?
There are people or individuals that drive separately, but most of the time, it's families coming all together in one vehicle.
So when you've had 35 people there, what described the parking situation that day?
Usually, the spots that I have available are filled up. Not necessarily, though. Like, I'll have times where there's 35 guests, and there'll still be two or three open parking spots.
Okay. And with the expansion, would you think that that might bring in 70 guests? Would it, you know, if you're basically doubling the size, are you potentially doubling the number of guests? Or is that not necessarily a linear?
I guess the only way to tell would be really to see it in action, to have a good answer for that. I'm not sure if it would increase or remain the same. I don't think it would decrease, but some, there'll be some sort of an increase in customer flow, I would assume.
Can you accommodate more, an increase from 35 or 40 people? You know, when you put the addition on? What's your thoughts on how many more?
Oh, absolutely. I think I would be able to accommodate up to 60 to 70 guests at one point in time, absolutely.
You're going to still have that little kitchen area in there? Are you going to expand that, or?
Yes. Right now, I have, there's about 12 pinball machines in that room. So those would all be removed, and I replace them with the cocktail table arcade games, so people could have a place to sit down and eat, or just hang out.
What about, what about materials? What are you going to use for the outside? Because it's kind of like, you know, maybe nickel, if you can, to Greg, I mean, like-
Yeah, I mean, it's a slow process, but like I said, we were conscious of the aesthetic, the things that we want to do. We definitely want to rivet up. There's no doubt about it. And obviously, that includes a nicely paved parking lot, nicely landscaped. These are all goals that we're definitely hoping to achieve in the not-too-distant future, you know? So we're choosing our battles right now. And we're picking up speed.
Yeah, we're probably going to want to see what materials you're going to use, and make sure that if it does get approved, it's going to-
Right.
Uniform, you know? It's not going to be chapped up anymore.
Yeah.
As much as you don't want it chapped up, we don't want to see it chapped up either, you know? Once you take that garage down and add.
Right. And the addition, if we attach that, if we put that addition on, we want it to be in keeping with the architecture, and that would include the siding. Now, that's something we can still discuss if we want to apply a different type of siding overall. Whatever we do to that addition, we're going to do to the complete building. And also, this is just something I'm cognizant of. I want there to be a continuity between the front building and the back building.
Correct.
So anything I do to the back building, I've got the front building in mind as well.
Which is presently vacant.
So I'm trying, you know, I don't want it always to look like a funeral home. I mean, I want it to, you know, look like an arcade. Sorry.
Nick, is the house up front, is it vacant?
It's being worked on right now. Greg and his fiancee will be occupying the upstairs apartment. And I have, I'll be utilizing the downstairs as an art studio. I do commissioned work, and that's another thing that we're hoping to do, is let the arcade be a backdrop for some of my work, and maybe even some local artists. But, so most of the stuff that I do will be, is in the way of commissioned work.
What about, so you guys are already going to the zoning board soon?
I think the 20th?
Next week, yeah.
Yeah.
Next week?
So we have to get a few variances.
How many is a few?
A few setback variances and parking lot?
Parking, and I think we resolved the green space that we had.
Yeah, I, just speaking with the people over at, well, Kate specifically, over at O'Neil-Rodak, this is like our third site plan. She made an error. She was nice enough to let me know about that at the last minute, but that's fine. But she made an error that actually puts us over the finish line when it comes to impermeable spaces and green spaces. So we were slightly under what we needed to have, and now apparently, we're slightly over it. So we've got, we've made adjustments to that number.
Okay.
And if you need just those figures, that's fine. If you need it to show up on the site plan, we'd have to go back and do, have another one done, which I'm hoping we don't have to.
I would think that she would be willing to correct that on the site plan.
It would be a nominal charge, if anything, if she did. So that's not an issue. If, I was going to call her prior to the, to this meeting, but I put that off, so.
From a technical standpoint?
Yeah, but that-
It gets filed in the, it's records that are with the county and the town forever. And if you're over, you know, if you're at a point where you have enough green space where you don't need a variance, it needs to be on the plan, showing that, otherwise.
It was kind of ironic. I had called her because I had some other ideas as to how we could implement some more green space in the landscaping, and then she spotted that, so, and she brought that to my attention. So I was happy about that. At least that's one small obstacle or variance we wouldn't have to, you know, go for, I guess.
Okay.
Lighting, you going to have any lighting, you guys outside? Do you have any now?
The parking lot is currently illuminated by solar detection lights. So nighttime, they come on. If they see movement, they get brighter, but nonetheless, they're always on at night.
And you need more, though, when you expand? Might want to think about that.
With the additional parking, there will more than likely be additional lights added onto the building.
And then when you go to zoning, obviously, if you're going to need additional parking, you might want to get something in writing from Mr. Speedy if you're going to, if you think you might need it. The additional parking we're talking about. If you think down, before you go to the zoning, if you're going to need it, you might want to have something, you know, in writing for Mr. Speedy.
Oh, yes. Just visited, funny that you mention that. I just visited my attorney, our attorney, and, yeah, he's, he's ready to work something up. I brought him a site plan, and I don't want to say this, but it's also, Speedy also offered us more parking if we need it. But I, I'm trying to, trying not to lean on him anymore. He's been so gracious in offering this up. He called today, you know, just to let me know that, that he wants to help us.
You just want to have a backup plan?
So we're going to have, yes, yes. We'll have a, we, just informally, we spoke about a five-year lease, that with a renewable clause, or whatever you call it, you know? So, yeah.
Good.
So he's, he's being altruistic with us.
Yeah, I was quite impressed, actually, when I was over there the other day, so. I was impressed with Greg, when I spoke with Greg the other day.
So you're the fellow that came over, okay.
Yeah, I'm the guy. So, yeah, so, you know, if you get these other things all squared away, you know, then we'll deal with it, you know, the next meeting or whatever. I'm all set right now.
Okay. Any other work?
I have some questions.
Sure.
It's a little unclear to me. So do you serve food and drinks there? Or you had mentioned people putting food on the-
That would be the plan for this expansion, is to have food available.
Okay.
Or snack food. It wouldn't be like, like a sit-down restaurant. It would just be snack bar.
Okay.
That's what I'd be looking to do. Hot dogs, tater tots, curly fries, stuff like that. Nothing that would have to involve overhead ventilation, all-inclusive appliances, things of that nature.
Gotcha, gotcha. And just like soft drinks and stuff like-
Right, no alcohol. I have no intention of making it a barcade by any means.
Okay, okay. The other question I had had to do with the signage. It's right in front of the house. Do people ever pull in thinking the house is the arcade?
Not usually.
Okay.
There is an open sign that I turn on, on the rear building, and-
Plus, we just painted an arrow on the driveway.
This way.
We did.
No, not we, I don't take part in any of that.
Temporary feature, but it was a brainstorm that I had when I was lining the parking lot.
Okay, all right. And my last question, do you have Frogger? Because I really love that game.
Frogger is one of the games that I'll be adding with the expansion.
Fantastic. Approved.
Jim, any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I just, I'm not sure if we made this clear to you. So you're going to go to the ZBA, at which point you will have identified all the variances that you think you're going to need, that you're going to ask the zoning board to-
Right, we grant, yes.
And then, let's assume you get the variances that you are asking for. So then, you come back to this board. If you haven't already done this, you want to get with the engineering department and make sure that when you make revisions to this plan, you include all the information that is in our town code that's on the plan. So you talked about some, you know, parking and landscaping improvements. Those details aren't on the plan. You know, you talked about the possibility of using the adjacent parking lot. So typically, we would ask you to have a cross-access easement, and-
In that regard, we were hoping that the sidewalk would suffice for that.
Yeah, well, that's not typically what we, what we would approve, because, I mean, obviously, let's assume that this business really kills.
No, we would love to do that, sure.
Okay? And that, you know, every Saturday, you're going to use a dozen or so of those parking spots. That's a lot of people walking out onto the public sidewalk to enter your driveway and conflicting with the cars that are pulling into the, to your parking area. So anyhow.
So Greg was an Eagle Scout. He actually built a bridge. His final thesis, was that? He's going to kill me. So maybe we can do that over the, but we did talk about that. We entertained the idea of doing that, not entertained, we talked about doing that. And it was actually Kate at O'Neil-Rodak that said, you don't really need to do that because you've got the sidewalk. But, no, we would love to do that. It'd be a great feature. I think if you did all that, you wouldn't need the variance. Oh, really? Okay.
Doug?
Typically, we've looked at standard, you know, onsite parking. Looking at off-site parking, it would come down to what kind of agreement was in place with the neighbor to ensure that there's legal access.
So it's possible you could-
So he was talking about doing a lease agreement, which tends to be more finite than something like an easement, which runs with the land. The bigger thing will be figuring out the number of parking spaces. I was speaking with the building and zoning administrator to look at what the parking requirements would be, given the type of space that they're looking at, and making sure that it is inclusive not only of the arcade, but the property in general. So if there is a specific number of required spots for the apartments, there's a specific number of spots required as part of the art gallery approval, and there'll be a specific number of spots that are required as part of the assembly space for the arcade. I know the zoning administrator's gone back a couple of times. The number right now is pretty large, so I think they would have trouble meeting it per code. But, and they will need a, in taking down the garage, they will need a variance for covered parking for the apartment. for the apartments, so they'll be going for parking variance of some sort, no matter what, would be my guess. But having access to the parking at Speedy's Plaza could be a consideration when looking at the variance. Typically, the zoning board tries to approve the least sizable variance as possible and being able to have access to additional parking on the plaza would be looked, I believe would be looked at favorably by the zoning board in that case.
So, there you have it. So, so there's some additional things that you, you need to consider and work out and some additional details that need to be on this plan, so, you know, just, you wanna make sure that you're addressing all of those with the revisions that you're asking your surveyor to make, so that when you come back to this board, we have the information in front of us to potentially approve. Assuming you get the variances you need from the zoning board.
Okay, so, okay, I'm just thinking ahead, there are things that, I don't know what span of time we're, we're given to, to complete the work, so I gotta find that out, but some of the things that we wanna do will be done in stages, the parking lot, for instance, initially will not be paved, but will be ultimately paved within a year's time, but that kinda thing.
Yeah, the, the plan is to do it in stages on a small business budget, if possible.
Well, that's, that presents some other challenges, so.
Well, like we discussed Greg, right, keep the airline communication over, you said you were talking to these guys, discussed that the other day, so make sure you keep the airline communication open with them and zoning, right, whoever you were dealing with over there, and obviously make, make sure Nick's on board with it, I don't know if you guys talked to them together.
Yeah, we've, we've been coming in on a regular, trying to, sorry Doug, but yeah, we've probably tired of seeing us, but we visited, in fact, I teased Andy about where my office is gonna be, I, I go in to see Andy Su Vegas all the time.
He loves the company.
And, so.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, because Greg and I discussed it.
These guys have been helping us every step of the way, you know.
Yeah, that's great, gotta keep the airline communication open, just so we don't have any issues later on down the line, and so I just wanna make sure, like that's what Jim's saying too. So, you're talking to the touré guys, Doug, Andy.
We couldn't have done it without, without these guys, we would have liked to have done it without these guys, but we couldn't.
Well, they didn't send you bills, so you're good. Okay.
Bobby, any questions?
Just one, one quick one, location of trash, just totes, or how are you gonna handle that?
We currently only need toters that get wheeled to the road and they're, they're picked up by Casella.
Okay.
If there is a increase in traffic, I might, may need some sort of a dumpster, but the only way to know would be to, be in that scenario.
Sure. Thank you.
Anybody in the audience like to comment on this application? And just as a reminder to the millions watching around the world, you can call in at 585-340-8771, or visit our website, penfield.org, and make a comment electronically by clicking the link to this meeting on the homepage of the website. We don't have anybody here, it seems, that would like to comment, and I don't see any phone calls in the queue or any electronic submissions, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for having us, appreciate it.
Okay, Doug, would you like to read our third application?
All right, application number three, BME Associates, Town Lift Bridge Lane East, Fairport, New York, 14450, on behalf of Conifer Penfield Associates, request under Chapter 250, Article 13-13.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield, for conditional use permit approval for proposed redevelopment of a portion of the existing building to include two restaurant uses and modifications to the parking area with associated site improvements on 8.77 acres located at 2067 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, Penfield, New York. The properties now are formerly owned by Conifer Penfield Associates and Zone General Business within the 250-441 overlay district. Application number 23P-0004, SBL number 140 dot 5 dash 1 dash 1.2 backslash 2067. So, just for anyone out there, this is a re-advertising for a public hearing, it was identified at the public hearing for the site plan approval that two of the uses in the building were going to require a conditional use permit. In the town of Penfield, conditional use permits require a public hearing.
Okay, welcome, and I must say that I've been on this board for 26 years and I'm looking at the most youthful applicant that I've, we've ever had with us, so, welcome.
So, Fred, before you get started, because this is, you know, semantic, you don't need to, to go through your whole presentation again, if you have some new information that you'd like to introduce to the board, we'd certainly like to see that, but you don't need to start over from scratch again.
Incredible, and, and good evening, and just real quick, with, with me tonight is Megan from BME, James Kritikos is.
Having a baby.
Having a baby, as we speak.
Wow, congratulations.
And then this is.
Welcome, Megan.
Thank you.
Awesome addition to the team, and then Freddie Jr., developer and training, and, and Fred Jr. also, I suppose, so, good evening. And the, the only contribution that I think is, is important is just to confirm the, with regards to the architectural comments, that we are in fact proceeding in line with the renderings recently presented, so, so the wood, the beautiful wood cladding, the intent is to provide, and Jim, you made this comment, you know, we're, every opportunity that we have to improve the aesthetics, the composure from both 250 and 441, and then the way that these buildings impact the, the customers when you're in, when you're in the campus is really important, so that, that height and that massing created by the, the wood materials and connecting the towers accomplish several goals, one aesthetically pleasing and two, provide opportunity to introduce marketable trade dress to highlight and, and the, the new tenants of, of this building, which we're very excited to, to have occupy the same. So, by way of my comments this evening, we're confirming that, that with regards to the plan's architecture review, we will be proceeding in line with, with the renderings that are on the presentation screen right now.
And what are your plans for signage here?
The, the evolution of our sign program there has been the high-efficiency internally-lit channel letters, and then, and then the, there was a comment as it related to the lighting, we're, we're not proposing RGB multicolor accent light throughout, there'll be a, a, a single tone somewhere between a 3500 Kelvin, 4000 Kelvin, soft white light, and, and really what that does is it expands the, it expands the energy across that, if you, if you think north or south to north, north-south, the way that, it just, it gives, it extends the plaza, and that's what we wanna do, is elongate and add depth to the offerings within, within the center. So, signage will be, signage will be consistent with, with the code, there are some directory elements because this building sits out several feet, about 25 feet west of the main plaza, that there might be, it might be nice to have an identifier that sits on the south portion, so that, so that tenant, that tenant that's at the corner, which would be the, the southwest corner, it might be nice to provide, somebody who enters through 441 or even through 250, an opportunity to easily understand that, that tenant resides in that corner building, but there's no, there's no intention to seek signed variances for, for the tenants. There will be, there will be a mix of retail and office, so I would expect that the office tenant may elect to not, may not be desirous of an internally-lit channel letter, which is more traditionally retail, so we might ask that we not illuminate the office tenant signage.
Okay.
Did we hear that there, the two-front spaces are most likely restaurant-type uses?
That is correct, that is correct.
Can you describe what those?
So, we categorize those tenants as culture-driving, fast, casual, so it's specialty, specialty food, not, that doesn't exist in the market, and, and they're consistent with and supportive of the other tenant mix in the plaza. So, if you look at the way that we've been evolving the, the tenant mix within, within our controlled property there, recently introduced Starbucks, you see Zoom Fit is, or Zoom Tan is now converting or evolving into their Zoom Fit, we have an awesome backfill for the Zoom Tan space, and what you're, what you're watching happening, happening quite literally in front of us, real time, is this really profound economic corridor, 250-441, evolve and capture a whole host of really incredible new, new retail tenants, and, and it's indicative of a lot of other things, you know, the medical density is increasing, the household composition is fantastic, there's a lot of things happening right at the, at the right time, and, and so now is the time to be a, an opportunist in the way that we strengthen our, our plaza and give a great future to, to that, to that corridor, and I think you're, you're seeing this happen in all four of those corners there, including earlier application for, for Chick-fil-A, you know, so when you, when you see these type of businesses look to invest in, in this trade area, that's a very, very good sign. And that's, and it's also consistent with the improvements you've seen to, to the exterior portions of the Target, and, and that plaza, which, which is, you know, the Wagon's Plaza looks, looks beautiful, you know, so everybody's, everybody seems to be stepping up and, and reinvesting into, into their facilities, which is very exciting.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
I'm good.
I like it, I like the way it looks.
Me too.
I feel that it matches the Starbucks.
Yep.
And it, I've always thought that building, the way it is now, never fit in that plaza, and I always forgot it was there, to be honest with you. So, I like, I like this look.
Thank you, and it's, and it is, it is truly a, an awesome kind of transition amplifier, you know, it'll be, it'll be, it'll, it'll have elements that allow us to start to revert back and continue to up, to upgrade and improve, but we're, we're trying to carry, we're trying to identify a, a few that are innately ours, and, and we, and we used a Starbucks to cement some of that movement, so I, I appreciate the comment.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'd like to open it up to the audience, is anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this application? Don't have to hide, let me see if there's any phone calls, any submissions electronically, just give out the phone number one more time, it's 585-340-8771, and penfield.org if you'd like to comment electronically. Guess we don't have anybody that would like to comment, so thank you very much for your presentation and thanks for setting a record so far for youthfulness at the planning board. And we will call this hearing closed.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Wanna go back to number one, or you wanna start with number three?
Let's start with, wanna go backwards, guys?
Sure.
Okay. So, where are we, we have a resolution being prepared for this?
Yeah, we can, we can, staff can start preparing a resolute, approval resolution, if that's what the board would like, staff really doesn't have any concerns at this point, our last communication with them was two items and.
I, I can't hear you, there's a.
You're there ticking?
There's time bound.
Somebody's saying SOS downstairs.
Yeah, so if you'd like, staff can start drafting an approval resolution, staff really didn't have any additional concerns, our last communication with them was two minor items.
You need a motion for this?
Yes.
So, I, I move to authorize the town staff to begin preparing an approval resolution consistent with the most recent presentation and materials submitted by the applicant.
Tiding second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Kenauer.
Kenauer, aye.
Tiding.
Tiding's aye.
Can you revise that to just say, table it pending?
Yeah, table pending a draft approval resolution.
Jim, would you revise that to say that you'll, that's, you propose to table it pending the development?
I move to table this application pending the staff's preparation of a approval resolution.
Well, now that you did a second motion, you just have to table it, but, do we have a second?
Tiding's, I moved with Jim Burton over there, he moved me.
Move to table, second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Kenauer.
Kenauer, aye.
Tiding.
Tiding's aye.
You hadn't technically tabled it, went, nevermind, okay, let's go to number two.
Number two, 1676 Penfield Road.
He's gonna write down whatever he wants to write down anyhow, so, we're good.
Okay, we're all set with that, well, we'll move, I'll make the motion if everybody's agreed to table it pending the zoning.
Was there anything else you'd like to add in as part of the tabling resolution, or just pending the zoning?
They're probably gonna need handicap access parking.
Yes, that is something that we've already started discussing with them, it may result in them losing one or two parking spaces on their exist, on the site that they're proposing, just to provide both the handicap accessibility as well as the access aisle for it.
Yeah, and, you know, I get that they're trying to do this with limited funds over a period of time, and I'm sure you can put, have language on the plan to, to handle that, but, you know, the, the accessible spaces have to be immediately adjacent to the accessible entrance, so they can't eliminate those, and gravel parking spaces don't qualify, so.
And it's all gravel, I was over there the other day, I mean, it's, it needs a lot of work.
They can't do that.
Yeah, you know, but, you know, I mean, you know that, because like I say, I had that conversation with him, he's been working with you, and he can do so, I figured, you know, we're gonna have all that straightened out, but, yeah, we gotta make sure all that's covered and.
Yes, that, that's been an ongoing conversation with the applicants.
And then anything that you want added on to the, the drawings, if they're gonna have them updated, you know, landscaping or whatever, I don't know if you wanna have more lighting, but I don't, I was there night, I don't know about the lighting at night.
Potentially should have some type of lighting in the parking lot.
And they got like 40 people there, you know, he told me, up to 40 people at night, and it's gotta be pretty dark in the back there, you know.
Yeah, so were they, they would consider renting those parking spaces behind them, correct?
No, it would be the ones directly to the west of them, or the east of them there, yeah.
Yeah, I think they might be trying to purchase the back.
From my understanding, the, Speedy's already has an existing lease on the rear parking.
Right.
I do know the applicants have entertained discussions with Dave Speedy to potentially purchase that in the future, to have more direct access to the building, since that building in the back there is, is the arcade.
Yeah.
So, I do know that's been a discussion point they've had with, with their neighboring property owner, but for now, they're looking at leasing the spaces directly to the east of them.
Okay, site needs a lot of work, I can tell you that much.
So, if he's got a five-year, if he gets a five-year lease on the 18 parking spaces, in five years' time, if the business continues to succeed, then, then maybe they can acquire that.
Yeah, acquire that or negotiate more, or look at other site improvements that they can do, reinvestment.
Or, or, or a permanent.
Yes.
Shared parking agreement, yeah.
Access agreement.
But yeah, you want to get it definitely all in writing, because, you know, I didn't even know anything was still going on there, but, and it needs a lot of work. And that's what they told me, because they're vacant up front and the back. It seems like they're just adding on peace, well, I mean, you know, let's say, I mean, you know, what's it going to look like? Like three different buildings to take, you know? Are they going to match?
Eventually it'll be two buildings, because they'll be taking down the garage. They originally proposing to keep it, since the apartments upstairs require covered parking. But it does take up a substantial amount of the rear corner of that site. So they were, it sounds like they're better served by potentially taking it down, turning that into additional parking, to provide more on-site. From my, based on discussions with the zoning administrator, I think technically speaking, based on the occupancy, that the basic occupancy numbers that the fire marshal ran, they were going to need something in the neighborhood of 120 spaces.
Oh, my gosh.
Because the, the back space is considered an assembly space for the arcade, the gallery, I believe is also considered an assembly space, and then it's two spaces per unit for the two apartments that they have approved.
You know, it's, it's assembly space, so it's net. So every piece of equipment, every arcade game gets deducted from the footage.
And I can run that again by the, the fire marshal and the zoning administrator to ensure that those numbers are accurate. I do know they've requested a more detailed site plan, or more detailed building, interior building layout, to be able to get a more accurate number based on the, what the interior conditions would be.
It's tight. I mean, God forbid there was a fire in there. I mean, it's, it's broken up in there, and I mean, it's tight.
That, that's been another discussion with the fire marshal, is the potential that the, with the addition that they'll be required to sprinkle in the building.
Again, it's a, it's an assembly space. It has to be posted for occupancy, maximum occupancy, so.
I don't even know what it is right now.
Well, the other thing is, the state law permits in an existing building, the fire official to post what's his comfort level. So, you know, if, if he believes that, that the maximum number of people in there that could safely exit in an emergency is 35, then he can post it to 35. And then that becomes the occupant load that you base parking and everything else off on. So there's lots of considerations there. My gosh, 100 parking spaces. If the ZBA hears that, you know, that's not a diminutive amount, you know? If you think, they've got 12 spaces now, and, and they're almost doubling it, they're going to 20, right?
Yeah.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
They feel like they're doing a good job, and they're 100 short.
Well, they know they're short. They, they got a lot of.
They need to buy Panorama Plaza and have a shuttle or something. It makes.
There's not even that many parking spaces for the Chick-fil-A.
No.
I don't get that.
So for Chick-fil-A, they look at it differently, because they're not counting, like the kitchen space. They're, they're looking at the number of employees for the kitchen space, but that one's based off of the dining room, primarily is what they're looking at for the occupancy and parking load for that.
I think that's.
But check it out, if you get a chance to check it out. It's kind of cool. He's doing that well. I mean, he's a smart kid. That kid, I mean, he's working on these machines out there. It was interesting.
We're old, Terry. We don't.
Like I saw stuff that, yeah, I remember. And like, wow, that's cool.
Antique.
When you were in your 50s?
You know, because you know how to play. Like, no, I don't. Actually, it's been a long time, so, but thanks. But yeah, they don't charge, he actually charges a fee, and then they just come in and play as long as they want, I guess. So they don't have to.
Is that how he does it?
Yeah.
He doesn't have to. Take a flat fee for a period of time?
Yeah. They do, you know, parties, kids' parties and stuff, very good. I'm good, though. So, yeah, I make the motion to table. Tidings.
I'll second. Bob, got you.
You're on fire tonight.
She is.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Knauer.
Knauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay, number one.
All right, 1327 Penfield Center Road.
Any concerns? Can we?
So I have a concern with the house being in a buffer area, based on his past approval. Didn't show the house in the buffer area, but then he constructed the house in the buffer area.
His existing house?
His house is in the 100-foot buffer area adjacent to the well-in.
How long's that house been there?
Well, since 2018.
Okay.
But the approved plans showed it outside the buffer area. So now the DEC, he's called the DEC, the DEC is going to be visiting his property, so I don't know what can of worms that's going to bring. And then also, we're asking for the septic system, because I don't know where that is. That could impact the subdivision of the other lot. I mean, it could be in the throat of the other lot, as far as I know. So that's why we've asked for that information. He provided a map, but it's not located on any survey.
It was something that we requested from the surveyor, and it's something I'm going to be requesting from him again. Mostly we're looking at it to ensure that the septic meets setbacks.
Is the applicant aware of the fact that his house is sitting inside?
I wrote the comment in the PRC memo saying, so I, I just don't know, I mean, we're fine with the subdivision, technically, there's nothing really. I just don't know what the existing ramifications of the, you know, the existing house is going to do.
Hold off now.
Yeah, except we don't know if the septic's encroaching on.
And I don't know if the septic's encroaching on the, where he wants to subdivide the lot, so I need that information in order to safely say the subdivision won't, you know, have any impact to, you know.
On the current, on the existing septic.
Right.
Yes, there are setback requirements for septic systems from adjacent property boundaries. And so that'll be something that has to be taken into consideration as part of the.
That's really the big thing, I guess, is the location of the.
A lot is shown is currently compliant. If they show the septic system and it meets current setbacks, then they won't have to move any lines. If they show the septic system and it turns out it's closer to where they're proposing to subdivide, they may have to adjust the lines to ensure that the septic remains and the expansion area remains within the.
And the dialogue that you guys are having is not with O'Neill Rodeck, it's just with the property owner?
Well, we just submit it to whoever submits the plan.
I get that, I just.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know, I'm, is that to Jamie?
If you were in communication with the surveyor.
Right.
That prepared the plot, then chances are you'd get a thoughtful response.
Yeah. It's whoever the applicant, well.
We respond based on the application and agent information that is provided in an application. In this case, I believe James applied both as applicant and agent on behalf of the applicant. So our direct line of contact is through Jamie Edel, but we can reach out to, or try to reach out to the, the surveyor independently.
When, when was that buffer established?
Well, in 2016. It's, the notes are on there. It says, New York State Wetland flagged by the New York State DEC on May 2016.
Do we know when DEC is coming back out?
I have no idea. So I'm waiting for, he sent me an email saying the reason why he relocated the house was because of the proposed, or at that time, the proposed septic system. But then he reached out to the DEC, and I'm waiting to get called into that meeting.
I think we'd be better off to table, hoping that we get some more, you know, answers.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess from a, to me, the thing that would really cause the tabling is not knowing exactly where the septic system is, right? How close it is to the property line.
Yes.
The DEC issue really has nothing to do with us subdividing.
That's an existing, existing condition.
That's an, right. And that's, somehow, he ended up with a house in a wetland buffer.
Yeah.
He's got an in-ground pool, indoor. So we should table this, probably.
Yeah. I'll move to table based on our discussion.
Tidings, I'll second it.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Knauer.
Knauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Anything else?
That's all I had for you guys tonight.
Okay. Well, there being no further business before us, we will adjourn. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Have a great weekend.